Flaherty?
Yeah.
Counsel Flynn?
Yeah.
Counsel Garrison?
Yeah.
Counsel Janey?
She mentioned you.
Counsel McCaughy?
Present, present.
Oh, present.
So sorry, present.
Me too.
McCaughy. Counsel O'Malley? Counsel Wu? And Counsel Zachem?
Very.
Thank you. And a present? We have the room.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. If all colleagues, staff, and guests could please rise. As Counsel Janey will come up and introduce our clergy for the day, who will take us through the invocation, I ask that everyone remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation.
Counsel Janey?
Thank you, Madam President. I am thrilled to be here this afternoon to introduce my good friend, someone who lives in my district. My district is home to so many great community leaders, so I'm just very excited. You all may remember a young activist preacher from Atlanta, Georgia. This young activist preacher was the son of a preacher himself. This young activist preacher from Atlanta moved to Boston and settled in Roxbury. He joined 12th Baptist Church, my family's home church. He met his wife right here in the city of Boston. This young activist preacher would go on to become a major leader in the civil rights, the fight for civil rights and for economic justice. And you may think that I am describing Martin Luther King, but I am not. I am describing this amazing young man, Willie Broderick III. So let me just quickly go through some of his bio. So Reverend Willie Broderick II, excuse me. The third is coming. The second. The second is an ordained Baptist minister currently serving as the Associate Pastor of the Historic 12th Baptist Church in Roxbury. Reverend Broderick was born and raised in southwest Atlanta, Georgia, and is a 2010 graduate of Georgetown University with a Bachelor's of Arts. He also has a Master's Degree from Divinity School, the Harvard Divinity School. And he's currently in his third year at law school, Northeastern Law School. So we've got your bachelor's, your divinity school degree, and now your law degree coming. Prior to law school, Reverend Broderick served as the outreach coordinator in the Community Engagement Division for the Mass Office of the Attorney General, Mara Healy, and as Deputy Financial Director for Martha Coakley's 2014 Race for Governor. Reverend Broderick was also appointed as a member of the Transition Team for the Suffolk County District Attorney, Rachel Rollins. He serves on the Board of Advisors for the Roxbury Y. He's the chairperson for the Boston Network for Black Student Achievement, which looks at Boston Public Schools. He's also on the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force, something that I served on for Boston Public Schools. He is a co-founder of Sustained and the Shutdown in Boston. He's a member of the War 12 Democratic Committee. He is happily married to his wife, Devon Cromarty-Broderick, who is pregnant with their first child, and that is William Broderick III. I like to say WB3, a little nickname. And he's also a proud member of Omega Psi Phi, my dad's fraternity. Lots of connections here. Thrilled to introduce my good friend, and I don't like calling you my constituent, one of the leaders in my community, Reverend Willie Broderick. Please welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President, to my counselor, Counsel Janey. I won't belabor the time. Let us prepare for our invocation. Most gracious and wise God, we come to you on this day thanking you for life, for health, and for strength. God, we ask that your blessings be upon the women and men of this council, who have been chosen to lead this city at this appointed time. God, as so much is happening in this great city of Boston, I pray that this council continues to acknowledge their great responsibility to serve each and every constituent in all of our communities equitably. But God, even as we address the issues of this day, let us be ever so reminded that there is still so much work to be done. There's still opportunity and achievement gaps in our Boston Public Schools that need to be closed. There's an opioid crisis that is ravaging our communities, where so many of our brothers and sisters are standing out on the corners of Melnea Cass Boulevard. There's a housing crisis that is pricing out people in our neighborhoods. There's trauma that is paralyzing our communities as a result of violence. And there needs to be a remedy. God, people are being cut from opportunity for the lack of transit accessibility. God, and even right now, in the midst of all that is going on, there's still racism, there's still classism, there's still homophobia, there's still a power imbalance in this city that needs to be addressed. But God, I believe that there's still hope, because you have placed in this council talents and intellectual capacities and prayerfully the will to meet each and every one of these issues head-on. So my prayer on this day is that you grant this council your wisdom and give them the courage to do that which is right and good for the city of Boston. And God, let them hear your people, be led by your Spirit of love, justice, mercy, and peace. And God, we'll be so grateful to give you all the glory. I give you this prayer in that which we consider holy, whom many call by many other names, who I consider the name Jesus Christ. Let every heart and mind say, amen.
Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And I have to start from a space of gratitude to Danny from Counsel Siomo's office. I appreciate the attire. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. And we're gonna move. I don't think I want to give it back. It's the real deal, apparently. Now moving on to the less glorious stuff, moving on to the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0928, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $65,346 in the form of a grant for the FY18 Burn Justice Assistant Grant reallocation, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund address verification program activities mandated by the Massachusetts Sex Offender Registry Board.
Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. At this time, I rise to suspend and pass docket number 0928.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, who is the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0928. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0928 has been passed. Moving on to reports of officers, of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 0929 through 0934.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0929 notices, as he from the auditing department, providing a list of fiscal 2019 reallocations made by the mayor prior to April 15, 2019, for the purpose of continuing operations. Docket number 0930, communication was received from Keegan Werlin LLP regarding N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy, EFSP 19-03, and DPU 19-15. Docket number 0931, communication was received from Mass Port regarding Boston Logan International Airport, Logan Airport Parking Project, draft environmental impact report, and environmental assessment, EEA, number 15665. I know this is not in your packet. The report is several hundred pages, and is available to be viewed at the front of the clerk's office. Docket number 0932, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Edwin Shoemaker as a member of the Boston Elections Commission for term expiring March 31, 2020. Docket number 0933, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ellen Rooney as a member of the Boston Elections Commission for term expiring March 31, 2021. And docket number 0934, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Sean Burke as a member of the Boston Elections Commission for term expiring March 31, 2023.
Dockets 0929 through 0934 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0935, the constable bonds of the following have been duly approved by the collective treasurer were received. Indira Alvarez, David Boudreaux, Sheila Cavallari, Robert Chan, John Connors, Carol Conroy, Deborah D. Grilamo, Stephanie Ellis, Iris Figuero, Jason Grant, Joshua Hanley, Regina Hansen, Peter Kenny, Christopher McNally, Paul McNally Jr., Brian Avalary, Jaclyn Pacetti, Julia Scott, Michael Slavin, Yolanda Thomas, Terrence Yancy, and Nicholas Ephorakis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair seeks approval of docket 0935 under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0935 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. Moving on to reports of committees.
Would you like me to read docket 0504 through 0508?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0504, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 13, 2019, docket number 0504, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Michael D. Mella, excuse me, as a member of the zoning commission for term ending November 1, 2020, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0505, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 13, 2019, docket number 0505, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Michael Nichols as a member of the zoning commission for term ending October 1, 2021, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0506, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 13, 2019, docket number 0506, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Anes Pharoah as a member of the zoning commission for a term ending May 1, 2021, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0507, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 13, 2019, docket number 0507, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Jill Hatton as a member of the Boston Zoning Commission for term ending May 1, 2021, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. And docket number 0508, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 13, 2019, docket number 0508, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Joanne Keith as a member of the zoning commission for term ending October 1, 2021, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. There are several batches of nominees and proposed confirmations today, and this first batch is for the zoning commission. We had a marathon session on May 31, where each of the groups appeared before the council, and they were introduced by a member or city representative affiliated with that commissioner board, and then councillors had the chance to hear from the nominees and ask them questions. Every single person appeared, with the exception of one who is in this batch, which I'll go through. So I'll just review, I think, chunk by chunk, what the commission is, and then who the nominees are and the recommendation. So again, this first batch is for the zoning commission. The responsibility of the 11 zoning commissioners is to maintain and update Boston zoning code. They meet regularly to adopt map and text changes that anyone can petition the zoning commission to adopt, and, you know, the council, for example, has done so on behalf of the public as well. Each of these appointees has to represent a certain, comes from either a list of nominees from different organizations, or represents a certain background. So if you listen, it'll be designated what bucket they represent. The five that came before the council for reappointment were Michael Demela as a nominee of the Greater Boston Real Estate Board, Michael Nichols representing the Audubon Circle Neighborhood, and Mike Nichols was the only one who was not able to join because he was out of town, but he did send in his materials, and as a former research director for the Boston City Council, my sense was that colleagues were familiar with him, as well as Anes Pharoah as an at-large homeowner representative selected by the mayor, Jill Hatton as an at-large representative selected by the mayor, and Joanne Keith as a neighborhood representative representing the Mount Pleasant Vine and Forest Street neighborhood. So each of these individuals was familiar with the role, was very excited and passionate about continuing in the role, and very committed to community engagement, making sure the public had a voice. So my recommendation is that each of these be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, Counsel Wu, who's the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of dockets 0504 through 0508. We will take each of them separately. All those in favor of passage of docket 0504, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0504 has been passed. All those in favor of passage of docket 0505, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0505 has been passed. All those in favor of passage of docket 0506, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0506 has been passed. All those in favor of passage of docket 0507, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0507 has been passed. And lastly, for docket 0508, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0508 has been passed.
Docket number 0777, Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on May 8, 2019, docket number 0777, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Catherine O'Neill as a board member of the Audit Committee of the city of Boston for term ending November 1, 2020, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you. So as mentioned, the Audit Committee also appeared before the city council with just one nominee, Catherine O'Neill. Mark McDonald, who's the Director of the Payroll Unit for the auditing department, attended and presented testimony and introduced the nominee. This is a five-member committee appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council to oversee the city's external and internal audit activities, and they meet at least once each quarter with the city's external auditors. So again, recommend confirmation of Catherine O'Neill for the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. At this time, Counsel Wu, who's Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of docket 0777. All those in favor of confirmation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0777 has been confirmed. Madam Clerk, if we could read, let's see, dockets 0101 through 0103 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0101, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on November 28, 2018, docket number 0101, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Catherine Corderitas to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for term ending April 1, 2023, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0102, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on November 28, 2018, docket number 0102, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Gerardo Espinoza to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for term ending April 1, 2021, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0103, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on November 28, 2018, docket number 0103, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Sammy Nabulsi to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for term ending April 1, 2022, submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is my last batch.
Good, thank you.
Bidfa is a financing authority that has a five-member board and actually is able to issue financing, including tax-exempt bonds for nonprofits, tax-exempt industrial development bonds for manufacturers, and taxable bonds that can be used to finance acquisition, construction, expansion, and capital expenses. The nominees were introduced by Bill Nickerson of the BPDA, who has a lot of experience and has been guiding this agency for a long time. Kathy Corderitas is a reappointment. Gerardo Espinoza and Sammy Nabulsi are new appointments, and similar to some of the other boards, there's specific areas of expertise that need to be represented. For this board, it's in finance, law, and real estate, and in fact, each of these three nominees represents one of those, each of those areas. What I found really fascinating about the conversation with these nominees is that they are looking to support Bill Nickerson and the agencies move into a new area of financing, to think not just about small business assistance and technical assistance connecting to the community, but actually being proactive about the needs that are going to be shaped by climate change and the city's infrastructure needs in the future. So this is a unique tool that Boston has. They are looking to leverage their expertise and kind of be more proactive in how the city supports development and resiliency and preparation with these financial instruments. So recommend confirmation of these members as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. At this time, Counsel Wu, who is Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of dockets 0101 through 0103. I will take them separately. For docket 0101, all those in favor of confirmation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0101 has been passed. For docket 0102, all those in favor of confirmation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0102 has been passed. And for, lastly, docket 0103, all those in favor of confirmation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0103 has been confirmed.
Docket number 0109, the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on January 9, 2019, docket number 0109, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $283,000 in the form of a grant for the Double Up Food Bucks Program, awarded by the United States Department of Agriculture, passed through the Fair Housing Food Network, to be administered by the Office of Food Access, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to recommend the passage of the following grants, which were referred to the Healthy Women, Families, and Communities Committee on January 9, as well as January 30 and February 13 of 2019. I held a public hearing on all the dockets. I know we're just starting with the first one, on Friday, April 5, 2019, and wanted to thank Counsel, good counsel from District 2, for his joining me and great line of questioning. The panelists at this hearing included Mayor's Office of Food Access Director Catalina Lopez-Ospina, Age Strong Commissioner Emily Shea, and Mayor's Office for Immigrant Advancement Chief of Staff Agnes Chang. The first docket we're discussing today is 0109. It authorizes $283,000 for the Double Up Food Bucks Program, which was awarded by the USDA. This grant will fund a pilot program to match SNAP dollars at local stores and bodegas in Mattapan, Dorchester, and Roxbury. The grant will also fund the evaluation of the program, support for participating stores, and outreach in education. Very excited to authorize this money today, as this will be the first pilot in the Commonwealth, and I'm sure it'll bring great success. So ask for adoption of this docket, please.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Anyone else looking to speak on this docket? At this time, Counsel O'Malley, who's Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0109. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0109 has been passed.
Docket number 0217, the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on January 30, 2019, docket number 0217, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,56,840 in the form of a grant from the Council on Aging Formula Grant Program, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0217 authorizes $1 million plus from the Council on Aging Grant Program, which will be administered by the Age Strong Commission. Through a grant set by the state budget, current funding provides for $12 per senior per year based on the 2010 census. As of 2010, there were 88,070 residents over the age of 60 living in the city of Boston. Proud to represent West Roxbury, which boasts the highest percentage, about a quarter of all West Roxbury residents are senior citizens. The funds here can be used to support community advocates, the housing team, Boston Seniority Magazine, in replacing the senior shuttle fleet with accessible vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. At this time, Counsel O'Malley, who's Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0217. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0217 has been passed.
Docket number 0335, the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on February 13, 2019, docket number 0335, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $440,000 in the form of a grant for the Nutrition Services Incentives Program, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 335 authorizes $400,000 for the Nutrition Services Incentive Program, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. The grant will fund meals for homebound seniors through the Meals on Wheels program, and I can tell you, I spent some time delivering meals with Ethos, which is a great social service provider, and should make a plan last week, and it's really encouraging to see sort of the cultural competency that Meals on Wheels has, the good nutrition value, and quite frankly, the delicious taste. Many seniors were overly excited to see me and to see their lunch and dinners that we were helping to help deliver. So look forward to passage of this as well.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, who's Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0335. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0335 has been passed.
Docket number 0336, the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on February 13, 2019, docket number 0336, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for the Immigrant Advancement Initiative, awarded by the donor group, to be administered by the Office of Immigrant Advancement, submits a report... Advancement, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Finally, thank you, Madam President. Docket three three six authorizes two hundred thousand dollars for the Immigrant Advancement Initiative, which is awarded by the donor group. This amount was raised by corporate leaders at the We Are Boston Gala several weeks back. And the grant will fund programs, initiatives, events, and small grants to support and empower immigrants in the city of Boston. Again, I ask for adoption of an expense of this grant. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, who's Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families and Communities, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket zero three three six. All those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket zero three three six has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets zero six three one through zero six four three together?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Docket number zero six three one, Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three one, message in order authorizing the Law Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services for repairs to city property. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from recoveries for damages to city property caused by third parties. The Law Department will be the only unit authorized to expend from this fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at five hundred thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six three two, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three two, message in order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Tourism Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza to advance tourism and promote participation in public celebrations, civic and cultural events. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to City of Boston Code Ordinance eleven dash fourteen point four, I'm sorry, eleven dash seven point fourteen. The Mayor's Office of Tourism will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six three three, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three three, message in order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for the fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six three four, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three four, message in order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to purchase goods and services to support public art, to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Improvements Commission. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six three five, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three five, message in order authorizing a limit for the Distributed Energy Resource Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to facilitate the purchase of offset of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of the electricity consumed by the city annually, and to operate, maintain, and monitor, and expand the city's existing solar arrays and Boston Public Schools, combined heat and power facilities. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from the sale of renewable and alternative energy certificates and demand response program revenues produced by combined heat and power units located at the Boston Public School sites, and solar renewable energy certificates produced by the city's photovoltaic arrays. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed a hundred thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six three six, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three six, message in order authorizing a limit for the Parks Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to reimburse for the administrative cost to those city agencies which enforce CBC Chapter sixteen, Sections one point nine and one point nine B, and for costs associated with licensing and registration. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from all dog registration fees collected pursuant to CBC Chapter eighteen, Section one point four, and fines pursuant to CBC Chapter sixteen, Section one point nine and one point nine B. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed two hundred thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six, I'm sorry, zero six three seven, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three seven, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Centers for Youth and Families Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to pay salaries and benefits of employees to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate City Hall childcare. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from tuition paid by parents or guardians for children enrolled at the center. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six three eight, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three eight, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for Boston Public Schools' technology. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed one million dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six three nine, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six three nine, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to support the maintenance and repair for BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease, permit for use, and packing fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in this fund. BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed two point six million dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six four zero, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six four zero, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 for Boston Public School transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. This revolving fund shall be credited with revenue received from Boston Public Schools' Department for the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activities other than transportation to and from school. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed four hundred thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six four one, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six four one, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the Police Department's Fitness Center. Revenue from this fund is derived from monthly membership fees. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed one hundred thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number zero six four two, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six four two, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to support the K-9 Unit's Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020, excuse me, to support the K-9 Unit's Training Program for offices and police dogs for non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The Special Operating Division will charge tuition and other fees to outside law enforcement agencies for the K-9 Unit. The tuition and fees, other fees by outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and provide funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. The Special Operation Division shall be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at seventy-five thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. And docket number zero six four three, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April tenth, twenty nineteen, docket number zero six four three, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department's Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2020 to support training programs for offices from non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The Academy will charge participating outside law enforcement agencies tuition for each recruit, police officer, or special police officer they send to the Academy. The tuition paid by outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and to provide funds for training needs not otherwise budgeted. The Police Academy will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at fifty thousand dollars, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Boston City Council is required to annually reauthorize the not-to-exceed amounts for departmental revolving funds. Revolving funds are authorized under Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. Revolving funds are accounted for separately and are credited only the departmental receipts received in connection with programs supported by the fund. Expenditures may be made without further appropriation that cannot exceed the balance of the fund, nor the total authorized expenditure, without further approval. We reviewed FY twenty revolving funds authorizations in companion hearings to all of their departmental budget hearings on April twenty-second, April twenty-third, May ninth, May thirteenth, and May fifteenth. Revolving funds are an important budgeting tool that allows departments flexibility in managing self-sustaining programs that are difficult to include in their budget due to their intermittent and/or inconsistent nature. The Committee has formalized and standardized this process by developing a review and reporting structure that takes place alongside the budget process to allow funds to be considered in the context of overall departmental budgets. The review and reporting format that we have established continues to improve transparency and accountability in the annual review and authorization of these funds. I'd like to thank you all for participating in a robust review process of these revolving funds, and therefore I recommend passage of dockets zero six three one through zero six four three. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Anyone else looking to speak on these dockets? At this time, Counsel Siomo, who's Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of dockets zero six three one through docket zero six four three. Each of these requires a roll call vote, so we will take a roll call vote for each docket. Just be patient. So at this time, for docket zero six three one, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket?
Can we get a quick recess?
Oh, no problem. Quick recess. Acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket zero six three one through zero six four three, we'll take a roll call vote for each. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for docket zero six three one.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number zero six three one, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes.
Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes.
Counsel Garrison.
Yes.
Counsel Garrison, yes.
Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes.
Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes.
And Counsel Zachem.
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number zero six three one has received a unanimous vote.
Docket zero six three one has been passed. We could call the roll for docket zero six three two?
Thank you. Docket zero six three two, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes.
Counsel Garrison.
Yes.
Counsel Garrison, yes.
Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes.
Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes.
And Counsel Zachem.
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number zero six three two has received a unanimous vote.
Docket zero six three two has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket zero six three four?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket zero six three four, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes.
Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes.
Counsel Garrison.
Yes.
Counsel Garrison, yes.
Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes.
Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes.
And Counsel Zachem.
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number zero six three four has received a unanimous vote.
Docket zero six three four has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket zero six three five?
Docket zero six three five, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes.
Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes.
Counsel Garrison.
Yes.
Counsel Garrison, yes.
Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes.
Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes.
Counsel Zachem.
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number zero six three five has received a unanimous vote.
Docket zero six three five has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for docket zero six three six?
Docket zero six three six. Docket 0636, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0636 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0636 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0637?
Docket 0637, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0637 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0637 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0638?
Docket 0638, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0638 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0638 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0639?
Docket 0639, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0639 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0639 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for docket 0640?
Docket 0640, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0640 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0640 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0641?
Thank you. Docket number 0641, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0641 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0641 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0642?
Thank you. Docket 0642, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0642 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0642 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0643?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0643, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. And Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0643 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0643 has been passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could read dockets 0622 through 0624 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0622, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 10, 2019, docket number 0622. Message an order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY 2020. Submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. Docket number 0623, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 10, 2019, docket number 0623. Message an order for the annual appropriation for the school department for FY 2020. Submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. And docket number 0624, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 10, 2019, docket number 0624. Message an order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefit liability trust fund known as OPEB, established under Section 20 of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32B. Submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice.
Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. Dockets 0622 through 0624 represent the FY 20 operational budget. They were sponsored by the mayor and referred to the committee on April 10 of this year. As you know, in accordance with Chapter 190, Section 15 of the Acts of 1982, this body must take action on these dockets today, or they will automatically take effect. To date, the committee has held 27 hearings on the FY 20 departmental budgets and their capital projects totaling over 53 hours, including four hours dedicated exclusively to public testimony. We have been distributing for your review written testimony from all other departments that did not undergo a review in a hearing. At this time, I recommend docket 0622 through 0624 be rejected without prejudice to allow for more time to review recently submitted written testimony in advance of an expected resubmission to reflect updated budget priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, who's Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends acceptance of the committee report and rejection without prejudice of dockets 0222 through 0624, which is the FY 2020 budget. I'll take each docket separately. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for docket 0622?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0622, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, you too. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0622 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0622 has been rejected without prejudice. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0623?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0623, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0623 has received a unanimous vote.
Docket 0623 has been rejected without prejudice. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for docket 0624?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0624, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Garrison. Counsel Garrison, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0624 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0624 has been rejected without prejudice. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0144, order for a hearing to discuss the inclusionary development policy and affordable housing.
Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. First, I wanted to thank my colleagues who came out on a Monday evening and stayed with us, along with city councilors Kim Janey, cofilers Counsel Flynn, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Sabby George, Counsel Wu, and also Counsel Baker. We also had State Representative John Santiago also come through. And I wanted to thank you all. I know it was very busy time in all of our schedules, and to have you come out to Counsel Flynn to the very end, and thank you so much for staying there. I think it was 8:30. But we had a great deal of interest in this because we see it for the opportunity that it is. We, on Monday, had the hearing on docket 0144 with regards to our inclusionary development policy. This policy was first created in 2000, and this policy is not part of our zoning code quite yet, though I do support the mayor's initiative to make it part of our zoning code. But in the meantime, without the state's intervention, or whether we pass the mayor's proposal in the city council, we can directly impact our affordable housing percentages and numbers, and that's what that hearing is about. The city is currently evaluating this policy and this update, and we haven't really had one since December 2015. So we see this for the opportunity. We see the crisis that we're in, and so many people came out. Public presentations from the BPDA and from DND were incredibly informative. We learned that the consultant who they are going to be working with is Landwise, and they will be doing a financial feasibility analysis. And to the city's credit, they have established a technical advisory group that includes folks from all over the city who are meeting with them on a regular basis. A lot of what the city will do directly when it comes to percentages will have to do with the feasibility study coming out. So we'd love for that feasibility to be made public first before any formal decisions are made. At the hearing, Chief Dillon and Tim Davis of the BPDA's Housing Policy Manager reported on actually many of the successes from the IDP policy, and there are many to report. Since its creation, IDP has resulted in a creation of 2,600 onsite and offsite income restricted units. 800 units are currently in production. Most of the units are actually located in or near areas with substantial development, and less than 10% of the units are offsite, which many people are curious specifically about where all the money is going. The IDP currently applies to private projects, over 10 units that need zoning relief. And so although most specific policy commitments will wait until the completion of the feasibility study, to the BPDA's credit, Mr. Davis noted the administration is looking at ensuring that smaller projects contribute financially to the IDP fund. These are all good things. Chief Dillon noted 70,000 units in the city, or 20% of the housing stock, are already deed restricted and below market. Chief Dillon also noted that since DND has taken over the IDP fund, $110 million have been raised, and over 2,100 income restricted units have been financed. The IDP funds, another question that we had was what income target is it for? It's for incomes between $22,000 and $64,000 a year, trying to hit not necessarily deep, deep affordable units, but middle-income individuals and working families. Residents from Boston attended the hearing. Members of the public pressed the city to secure several things. First, a greater percentage in the affordable units, feeling that 13%, which is what it is right now, is way too low. They looked to other cities actually to point to different examples, 20% in Cambridge, 20% in Somerville. They spoke to the need of also more family-sized units, so even amongst the 13%, they didn't feel that there was enough units for families who need them. We highlighted a concern for also the income guidelines, looking at the AMI has been very critical. The area medium income includes towns outside of Boston that have higher incomes, and as a result, our average is up to about $100,000, which isn't reflective of the majority of Bostonians. So the measuring stick we're using, many people were critical of. But the city, to its credit, noted that it's a matter of just simply using another part of that measuring stick and maybe producing more 30% AMI units. Housing groups also asked for clarity on the economic assumptions behind the inclusionary development policy. And also during the hearing, councillors raised numerous topics, including taking, attracting the rejections, which is something we learned the city isn't doing, why someone would be rejected from an affordable unit. Big concerns for us who have populations that may have a quarry, that may have credit problems. And as Chief Dillon noted, people are paying their rent and not paying other bills, and as a result, their credit score may be going down. And then to use that credit score to deny them access to affordable unit is something that the city shouldn't be doing. I said that, and I hope that credit scores are not part of judging someone's ability for affordable unit. Overall, it was a robust conversation. We wanted to make sure also, I forgot the councillor who suggested this, but requiring developers in LLCs to disclose the financial interests so that they're actually open about this. We learned in a prior working session disclosing who's part of your LLC does not actually take away your liability protection. So we should actually know who's buying in Boston. I want to thank Counsel Flaherty for that suggestion. We also heard about the preservation of Chinatown row houses and also using some of the funds to support community land trusts going forward. The report, as we learned, is still being worked on. We expect to have a final analysis, I believe, from Landwise in the feasibility analysis in about a month or so, but the overall report will be worked on throughout the summer, and we should expect to learn more about what our IDP will look like. I want to thank all the advocates who came out and stayed to the very end. I want to thank my colleagues as well. I thought it was a very good, robust hearing, and I would request that the matter remain in committee.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Counsel Flynn and Counsel Edwards for co-sponsoring the hearing with me, and also especially like to thank the Chair for her great work at the hearing, but also for her tireless work, both personally and professionally on the issue of affordable housing. It's absolutely critical that we provide as much affordable housing resources to all the residents of our city, particularly the people who made this city, the great place that it is, and who can no longer afford to live here. I know that for many, we all agree that housing is an issue of racial equity and also of economic justice and should be treated as a human's right issue. We also know that by working together collectively as a council, working with the administration and also the BRA, we have an opportunity to shape the changes with respect to IDP as well as to implement things that are going to make sense moving forward, particularly as we're experiencing a period of unprecedented growth and development. So I look forward to continuing to work together through the Chair and the administration to make that happen. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to say thank you to Counsel Edwards and Counsel Flaherty for their important work on this issue. I want to thank the administration, Tim Davis and Sheila Dillon for attending, providing and participating in this robust conversation we had with the city council and with many residents of Boston who testified at the hearing. Counsel Edwards provided a great picture of what Counsel Edwards provided a great picture of what happened at the hearing, and I just would like to add that I want to see the IDP percentage increased to ensure that Boston always remains a city where not only the wealthy are able to live here, but also low-income families, the elderly, persons with disabilities, our immigrant community, making sure that Boston is welcoming to everybody. And as Counsel Flaherty said, this is about social and economic justice for every resident of the city. So I'm proud of the great work of Counsel Edwards and Counsel Flaherty as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. At this time, docket 0144 will remain in the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number 0173, message in order approving a home rule petition to the general court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding a Fire Cadet Program for the City of Boston Fire Department."
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam President, this matter was sponsored by Mayor Martin Walsh, referred to the committee back on January 16. The Committee of Government Operations held a hearing on this docket on June 11 where public comment was taken. This special act would allow the Boston Fire Department to recruit Boston residents between the ages of 18 and 25 to serve as fire cadets, receiving on-the-job training and perform, sorry, receive the job training and also perform civilian duties at BFD headquarters and throughout the firehouses across the city. Upon completion of the program, cadets may receive preference on the list of eligible candidates, up to 33% of the upcoming fire recruit class. Fire cadets must meet the physical qualifications required for applicants for appointment as firefighter in Boston. The following individuals from the administration offered testimony, there was Danielson Tavares, Chief Diversity Officer, Juan Sanchez, Boston Fire Department's Diversity Officer, and Vivian Leonard, the Director of Human Resources for the city. Administration officials explained that the appointment for a BFD cadet is the entry point issue and that because of the civil service structure, which is the statutory preference for, absolute preference for veterans, it is extremely difficult to increase the number of women and diverse candidates in the new recruit classes that come on board. In fact, I think the last several classes, there have been no civilians that have been able to compete for a position. Administration officials described the recruitment efforts that they currently undertake and stated the passage that this home rule would further enhance those efforts by increasing access for individuals to become firefighters. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend docket 0173, a petition for a special law regarding a fire cadet program for the City of Boston Fire Department ought to pass. We can look no further than the current Boston Police Cadet Program, the success that we've had. That program was implemented back in the 70s. And our last two police commissioners, both former Commissioner Billy Evans and our current Commissioner Willie Grass, have both come from the ranks of the cadet program. So we've demonstrated the ability in Boston to have a very successful cadet program, to create the next generation of leaders. The ask now from this council and our mayor is of our counterparts up at the State House to consider giving the City of Boston. The fact that we even have to ask for it is outrageous as it's coming out of my mouth as I'm thinking about it. But the fact of the matter is that's how it's structured. So if they could, in their wisdom, give us the ability to create a fire cadet program, it would go a long way in helping us have a department that reflects the face of our city. So with that, through the chair, I look forward to any additional comments, but I look forward to this matter passing today. Get the mayor's signature on it and get this up to Beacon Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Counsel Flaherty, for hosting the hearing. I plan a voting no today, not because I don't believe that the fire cadet program should go forward, but there's no structure at all to this program. When the questions were asked, how many weeks, how many years, how much do they get paid, what exactly are they going to do, how many are they going to be in East Class? It was, we're going to look into that. We're going to mirror other cities. They have no idea what this program's going to look like. I don't feel comfortable voting yes on a program that I just don't know what it looks like at this point in time, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, Counsel Flaherty, who's Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0173. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0173 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions?
Docket number 0936, Counsel Garrison offered the following resolution, recognizing and honoring the world's greatest generation on the 75th anniversary of D-Day on June 6, 1944.
Counsel Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Following the very profound and moving ceremonies remembering the 75th anniversary of the D-Day invasion last week, I felt to found this resolution in support of the world's greatest generation. The world will choose generation, men of our beloved city of Boston, some who have gone home to God, and others are now living and advanced in years. Are all a part of the greatest generation, their selfishness, service, love, and devotion to the United States and protecting the liberty of those who could not fight for themselves during one of the most turbulent times in world history needs to be recognized. I ask the Boston City Council to go on record in honoring the world's greatest generation by remembering those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to keep America safe and free and invoke God's blessing on all American citizens. Our city, country, world would be a better place if we could survive to emulate the patriotism of the world's greatest generation. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass.
Thank you, Counsel Garrison. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zakeham, as well as the Chair. Counsel Garrison seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0936. All those in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0936 has been adopted. Moving on to personnel orders?
Docket number 0937, Counsel Campbell for Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel McCarthy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0937. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0937 has been passed.
Docket number 0938, Counsel Campbell offered.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0938. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0938 has been passed.
Docket number 0939.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0939. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0939 has been passed.
Docket number 0940, Counsel Campbell.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0940. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0940 has been passed.
Docket number 0941, Counsel Campbell.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0941. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0941 has been passed. At this time, I am informed by the clerk that there is one late file matter, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, the late file matter is added. And just so you're aware, it's a personnel order. Madam Clerk, if you could read the late file into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. In City Council, June 12, 2019, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Wu.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the late file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the late file matter has been passed. Anyone wishing to remove a green, something from the green sheets may do so now. Moving right along, I am informed by the clerk that there are zero late file matters for the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. At this time, all those in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Anyone have any announcements? Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
I just wanted to say tonight, obviously, is a special night for Boston. We're all going to be glued to our TVs. But, so I don't need to say the magic words. I'm sure the Counsel President will close out with that. But we do want to acknowledge Matty Grislik from Charlestown, who is playing on the Bruins. He has been cleared. He played in game two. He had a concussion. He's been cleared to come back on the ice. We hope he will play a couple minutes or the whole entire game. But we just wanted to express our extreme pride in him representing 02129 and, of course, the City of Boston. As I was told to say, he is townie tough and is with townie pride, that we say, "Go Bruins." Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Obviously, on behalf of the council, just want to offer our thoughts and prayers for Big Poppy, David Ortiz, the last person you think is going to be a victim of senseless violent crime. Is someone that has done so much good for so many people in his time here, not only while playing, but also even now in retirement and his affiliation with the Red Sox. I can assure folks that he is in the best hands over at the Mass General. We share the same doctor. Dr. Larry Ronan is probably one of the best doctors in the entire country, so, if not the world. So he's getting great medical care, and I hope it's for a speedy recovery for Big Poppy.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Anyone else have any announcements? At this time, I would ask that all guests, staff, and councillors please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Baker, Alfred Grazio. For Counsel Asabi George, Fred Fiandaca. John Jack Lynch. For Councillors Flynn and Flaherty, Harold Imo Baron. For Counsel Janey, Joseph Sacolo. For the Chair, Reverend Aiden Ward. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, the Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again in this chamber at Boston City Hall on the 5th floor on Wednesday, June 19 at 12 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.